The first committee will be Finance and Personnel with Chairperson Jeff Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President.
Goodbye, yeah. Voice tonight, I have my seasonal bronchitis, so if I collapse in the middle of the meeting, you know what's going on. The agenda is fairly light tonight. We're first, we're gonna start off with the non-union compensation plan that's being prepared by a consulting company that we have onboard, Clemison Nelson. I see the representatives are in the audience. I see our Human Resources person is in the audience, so I'll let whoever feels most qualified to leave off. Come off the podium, identify yourself.
Sure. Brian Butcher, Regional Manager and Director for the Columbus office, Clemison Nelson.
James DiCaprio, I'm a Senior Consultant as well, from Clemison Nelson.
Tonight, we're here to just give you guys an update on the non-union compensation package, and I believe they have a package, correct? James, come back over here.
I don't have a packet.
We don't.
I don't, I don't believe so. I feel really left out.
Give them their three, three F and P.
Oh, wait a minute, is that on our drive? It's on our drive.
I'll take one, please.
I'll take one anyway. Thank you.
Essentially, what you're gonna see enclosed is a modification to our implementation scenarios that we discussed at the last F and P committee meeting.
Mm-hmm.
The changes that have been put in place were developed in conjunction with city Last time in the F and P committee meeting, we talked about a three-year phase-in of any such implementation. It's been recommended by city administration and us, and I believe the auditor's office said it would be easier if everything was done in one fell swoop. So what you're gonna see in your packet is basically a breakout of options. These are these, this page right here. Okay? It's got the options for implementation and costing. Scenario 2A includes no cap. I know we spent a lot of time on the cap last time with respect to implementation. Scenario 2B includes a $2.50 cap, and scenario 2C includes a $2 cap. As well as, we have also stretched out, I guess you would call it implementation based on tenure with the city. The reason why we do that is because if you do make modifications to the pay plan, you don't want to bring somebody in tomorrow that would be next to somebody who has been here for several years. It's basically to accommodate for individuals who have been here with the city and kind of address, from a fairness and equity standpoint, where they would be in the new pay scale. As you'll see, that in the proposed implementation cost scenarios, we have structured it so that it goes to two years, five years, seven years, eight years, nine years, and 10 years. The thought process here, as opposed to our last implementation costing proposal, was to award those who have been here a longer time with respect to getting them through the pay scale. You will also see the roll-up build-in, approximate roll-up of 35 percent. Roll-ups are what we call ancillary costs, BWC, pension costs, those kind of things that build upon the wages. Okay? And you will see the three scenarios. Behind that page, we actually broke out the formulas that you would use to come up with the implementation. Now, you may be asking, well, how did you guys pick these figures? The 2, 5, 7, 8, 9, 10. To be honest, they're pretty arbitrary. However, in the public sector, tenure is a common component to weigh, to weigh, not necessarily performance, but weigh where you should be within a pay scale. And if you do not, and I have had clients do this, if you do not wish to do some sort of implementation phase-in, you will have that issue where those who you bring up to minimum, who are exactly at that minimum pay rate, you're gonna hire somebody tomorrow at the same exact pay rate. So, just something to consider. And the last document that you'll have in your packet is an update of the proposed pay grades. The new scale, and James, do anything?
Same scale.
Same scale from last time. But the big thing that we wanted to share with you was the actual costs tonight. And we can get other council members copies on the way out. I guess we were under misunderstanding. I thought there were only gonna be the F and P committee here.
It's in the computer, we all have it. Just turn it around.
You have to be very computer savvy to see it.
Do we need to refresh everybody on the cap?
It'd be a good idea if you did.
On the cap, okay. On the cap, so, for instance, if, based on your classification and based on the formula that we plug somebody in, say somebody was hired 1987, you plug them in based on their service. If, based on that service, they would receive over $2 for scenario C, they would be capped at that $2 wage. Why we cap individuals is for fiscal prudence. You know, in a perfect world, we'd fix the whole thing, but sometimes you can't do that. And actually, scenario 2A has no cap, and that's where you will see the dollar difference. Do they have the individual ID right now? Ten? No, two left. Okay. But this is basically a summary. We have data on each individual and where they would be. Okay? Any questions from City Council?
You have my clinic, it's coming with questions.
Well, I'm sure we have questions, we just haven't digested the information.
Yeah, it's a lot of information. It's a lot of information. From our standpoint, we're getting very close to where we found.
Councilmember McGee?
As a former member of your committee, and having heard...
Oh, yes, fond memories.
Yes, yes, and having heard some of the talk last time, I did have one question. My understanding was your entire study is based upon a comparison of wages and salaries for other places like Columbus, for instance. What other areas of southeastern Ohio and areas that might be more appropriate to our current wage scale are included in that?
That's actually a component of the whole study, not the entire study and what it was based on. And what we selected, James, you have those jurisdictions.
Area that like is her, she'll talk to you.
We didn't get into the burbs of Columbus, though. Okay. We basically took the metros and the southeastern corridor of Ohio. And at the time the project started, the turnaround time on this data was supposed to be like three or four weeks. So we took data we had on hand, we did a manual survey of these jurisdictions, and what came out was, I mean Athens is paid competitively. The major component based on the study was an internal equity study, meaning how jobs are weighted within the city of Athens. One of the reasons why that was the major component of the study was because when we asked whether or not there were any recruiting and retention issues, the answer is no. Typically, that recruiting and retention problems are caused by failure to pay the market. And if that's not the issue, the major focus was on the internal equity. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And I believe the council has seen the survey and all that stuff before. And I apologize for not bringing the survey. If I brought every document that we've gone through, it'd be up here. So, I try to limit it to what people can understand in one meeting.
Administration?
Brian, remind me, was it statutory cities only?
Similar size statutory.
Yep. The reason why you do statutory cities is they have the same major department heads. Charter cities, the, for instance, they don't have an auditor. Most times, it's a finance director, which is a hired position, not an elected position. City manager versus a safety service director.
In terms of our internal equity, how do you think this proposed plan makes any corrections or strengthens this in any way?
Well, I will tell you that the city, its department heads, elected officials, and members of my team have put a great deal and effort into addressing internal equity. They did that through a position analysis questionnaire process, where you essentially ask employees to describe their job, ask their supervisors to double-check what the employees described, and we go through the point factor value process where you objectively weight positions. It's never gonna be perfect. I do think it addresses certain issues within the city that did exist. We did...
Could you give an example?
Sure. One of the best ways to, I think that we've addressed some issues, was we actually added pay grades to the study. So you can actually, the positions are spread out a little more. And by that, I mean, you don't have a group of positions that might have point factored the same in one, not entirely the same, within one pay grade. They're more spread out. For a city your size, I would say nine pay grades, which I believe is what you guys used to have, is a little small. So we went to 12 pay grades, is our recommendation. But one of the biggest issues, and I know she's in the room, but safety service director position, you have your CEO of the organization who was not in a pay slot all by herself. The position. And I want to stress, too, that this is a position analysis, not an individual analysis. So what we try to do is take the individual out of the whole thing.
Not see how you could do an assessment without taking individuals?
That's the goal. It's hard to do, though. I mean, these individuals, the administration, I mean, they work with those people every day. That's one of the advantages of using an outside firm, is that we don't know the people. We get to go home, even if we make a couple people mad, but we get to go home. But I will tell you, I think it's a solid plan. Your HR department has worked real hard with our staff on it. I mean, barring any drastic recommendations from the city, I mean, I think you guys are almost there, if not there, and, you know, you can fix stuff as it goes. If you figure out six months down the road that, hey, this position was way off, maybe you fix it then. But I think at some point, you know, we've gone back to department heads multiple times, at some point, we're gonna, there has to be, hey, this is what it is.
Right.
And your department heads have been excellent in the whole process.
So to implement this within one year, how do you think that's gonna shake out? There's a lot of here, a lot to swallow here.
Well, I mean, a lot of that's on the burden of your administration and your auditor to process payroll. But in essence, we've developed a document that has every individual's pay, what they are gonna be recommended at. So, I mean, once you guys have seen all the documents and you guys go through your readings, I mean, it should happen like this. I mean, in the last year, James and I have probably done five or six of these with employers two or three times the size of Athens. Heck, we do work for Franklin County. And once you get it to where you want it, you just gotta do it. And if there are issues, you address them as they go through. Like I said, not everybody's gonna be happy. I will tell you that not one individual was reduced in pay. In fact, I think everybody sees some sort of income except for one person. One red line.
One red line.
One red line person. Redlining means that they are actually beyond the scale.
And so we see three recommendations with a $2 cap, a $2.50 cap.
There's a fourth recommendation that's not on there, and I don't think it's the best way to go. That's adjust the pay grades, give people to the minimum, and no sort of phase-in of implementation based on tenure. And I've had clients do that as well. They just make the move, and, but then you're gonna have to address the morale issues that come with the project.
Pretty hardcore.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Did I answer your question?
Well, and I think my question is on process and next step, so if I'm understanding right, we have three possible scenarios within gathering information from recommendations from administration on which amount and what's possible based on auditor information as well. And we received some questions from the auditor today.
Okay. Would you be glad to answer?
Mr. Mayor?
You know, there is a lot that has gone into us to include looking at multiple, multiple scenarios. You know, we've looked at eight-year to 50 percent, we looked at 12.5 years to 50 percent, and all of them just constantly looking at the total cost with a 35 percent roll-up. You know, and looking this over in terms of financials, the $2 cap, you know, clearly financially looks the best on paper, but, you know, council, you guys need to look through this and the volume of information associated with this, you know, item by item, and see where you land on it. But that one, you know, in terms of these scenarios, seems the more prudent of the three, as well as the tenure. Again, there's subtle changes to the amounts if you took it out to 12.5 versus out to eight.
As you tweak the figures, everything changes. So you tweak the formula, everything changes. Typically, you're looking at 50 percent through the pay grade being close to market. I think 10 years at market, that's certainly conservative approach. Some of the cities we've worked through, five or six years is expected to be at market. But you also have to take into consideration the fiscal component, what can you afford, so.
Obviously. Would the auditor care to speak to any of these issues?
I suppose sit down?
Wait and stand aside, or?
Thank you for...
Human relations.
Let me speak this evening. Kathy and I will speak. First, I guess, just because I have the papers with me, I can tell you the cities, according to the report that were surveyed, Bryan, Salina, Gallion, Greenville, Napoleon, Orville, Pickla, St. Mary's, Tip City, Urbana, and West Hartford. Some of those didn't respond. We have been fortunate enough to have the materials a little ahead of time to do some, look at it and review it. The things that I would like to point out are that, first of all, Bryan has talked about phasing in so that people are well into their pay grade based on years of service to the city. However, the information that we have, I think, unless you can correct me, is really based on the years of service within a particular position. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So it's not years of service with the city. Just an example, in our office, Tina Timberman has been with the city for 10 years. She's been tax administrator for four, so they're counting the four years that she's been tax administrator, not the 10 years that she's been with the city. There seems to be some inconsistency.
So I, a question, so obviously people, places do that differently, or is that a common theme, that you take years with the city or in a position?
It depends on philosophy. With the position, in my personal opinion, makes more sense, because that's what you're paying for, is the job. And if I said tenure with the city, that was a mis-speak. I wouldn't try and...
Also, when you look at the individual information, there are some new positions. There's a new position titled Assistant City Engineer. However, that position, the person who's been hired 6.9 years ago and will receive all that 6.9 years of service. So I'm not sure...
Do you want me to address them?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Last time, we shared with F and P positions that, I believe, as part of the plan we were gonna propose, be reclassified. Does everybody know what reclassified means? Reclassified means, in essence, you'll be re-titled based on the functions that you were doing. I assume the auditor's office is pointing to, why give that person 6.9 years just for being reclassified? Right?
Correct.
If, I guess, in our study, we were erring on the side of the employee. If you can point me to a time in that person's individual career where their job changed, we'd be glad to switch it up. But we, based on the duties taken through the PAQ process, we erred on the side of the employee. Now, reclassification is done through the civil service process as well, and we covered this in the last F and P meeting. So that would have to be taking civil service to make that overall change to the Civil Service Commission. Okay? Letting you...
Sure, it does. Yeah, my concern is that in reviewing the information, I couldn't find a lot of definitive information as to when job duties changed. Did that person come in doing that job duties? Did they progress into that new title? So I don't know that there is adequate, really specific information. It would take a long time to go through all of the positions, but...
Would that be something the Human Resources should be taking care of?
I would believe so, yeah.
Okay. So we can dump in your lot?
And just be aware, I don't know if the information exists.
Right.
How well it was documented, this person came in...
At least that'd be a place to start.
It would be a place to start.
Right.
Yeah. The other factor that I'd just like to draw to your attention is that there are several vacant positions that have not been included in the total cost. They aren't filled now. If all of the vacant positions were filled within the next year, and I'm not saying that they will be, I'm sure there are some that won't be, if all of them are filled at the minimum without going 25 percent above, which is allowed in the policies, we would need an additional $643,000.
You're talking about a couple of police positions and fire, aren't you?
No. Assistant Director of Public Works, an instrument technician at EPW, a labor supervisor for APR, grants administrator for mayor, TGC technician, office manager EPW, administrative assistant auditor's office, executive secretary mayor, and then there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 general secretary positions that are vacated because those four general secretaries have been reclassified to administrative assistants.
Thank you. Ms. Mayor?
Yeah, if I may, I'll just go with the grant administrator mayor. There's someone who's currently in that position, so...
It was listed as vacant.
It's vacant, so that person would move into that, so it's really not an addition of $42,000 plus. It's someone being put into that position and then vacating what was an executive assistant position, which wouldn't be filled again.
Wouldn't be filled. That's what I said, yeah. I don't know what will be filled and what won't.
Well, it's the same with Assistant Director for Public Works as well. It's, you know, that would be currently one of the city engineers who would move into that position, if I'm not mistaken.
No, that is a creative position, but for example, the office manager EPW, that individual's been conducting that job, so the other administrative assistant will remain vacant, so.
So it's not new money, is what you're saying?
As I said, it was just vacant on the list. I don't have the information. Some of them won't be filled in somewhere, so it needs to be considered.
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions?
Well, I would just, well, thank you, Ms. Cr... Thank you. I appreciate you bringing that information forward, because $643,000 is a significant amount of money, and I think...
And we can riddle that down with more accurate information.
Sure.
Sure.
Happy to.
Thank you.
Madam Auditor?
Thank you very much. I do have a few things to add. We've tried to look at this very closely, and we, in general, agree with the whole process and a lot of things that they've done, and it would be great to just move everybody up and pay them, you know, what we can. But even without filling the, when you say it's no new money for the vacant positions, the new positions are new money that will be added on. So there is additional money just in the positions created, whether it's someone vacating another position and that being filled or not. And, but it is very expensive. So aside from the vacant positions, you saw the three scenarios, the $260,000 for the, you know, the best one. And, you know, as Bryan said, you know, I see issues with trying to phase it in over three years, and I understand, and if council decides to do that, but I just wonder how that all, you know, comes out in the wash when you're only giving someone part of their increase over years' time, and then in January, you give everyone a 2 percent raise, cost of living, whatever you want to call it, well, they're getting it on really a lower rate than they're supposed to be at, according to this plan, things like that. So however, I do, would urge caution and for council to look at this stuff very closely. There's some other issues I have, and, you know, and I just want to clarify a couple things. In our plan, the SSD was in the top grade by itself. And it's just that their first one, it wasn't, but it is now, and I agree with that. I agree with the 12 levels. I'm not saying there are people that should be moved up, but I think that people that are being reclassified into higher-paying positions, the justification should be there. There should be, you know, a reason for that, not just because, well, you know, I like my secretary, I think she should be titled an administrative assistant, kind of thing. And I'm not saying they don't deserve it, but there should, I mean, I think council should ask for justification for some of these things, you know, what is the reason for this? And I know they had this point system going. I would just like to see council, you know, look at some of this stuff more closely as we have. I'd also like to see us get a copy of the manual before you vote on the compensation, because another thing to think about, our recommendations in the manual on these increased pay rates will cost money. If we're gonna allow something that I'm opposed to, and I talked to the mayor about this today, hiring somebody 25 percent above the minimum rate throughout the whole city, I just think is, well, I don't want to say irresponsible, but kind of, I can't imagine what would justify hiring a general secretary at 25 percent above the minimum coming in. I think sometimes people forget that if you get a general secretary who happens to have a bachelor's degree, well, that's great, but is that really a requirement of the job? Do you give them extra money just because they have an extra degree? No, you pay them for the job they're doing and what you're bringing them in at. So, and if you start doing that, and a lot of people start hiring people at 25 percent above, all your raises are gonna be on, you know, on that. Probationary raises, number one, then your cola raises. That's two raises in one year that they're likely to get onto that increased pay rate. I also, and I want to clarify, too, when we're talking about years of service, we have an issue in our office, and that's partly why this came out, is we have Tina, who... partly why this came out, is we have Tina, who Laura already mentioned, has been in the tax department for 10 years, the tax administrator for us. But it's really one of the account administrators who was administrative assistant, still at the same pay level as the account administrators in our office, the way that was set up. And when we lost our payroll administrator, she took on those duties, and we did replace that position. That was one of the issues with giving pay raises. We didn't increase that position. People in the office have taken on some of these other duties. And, but because she, and I am not the one who gave titles to people in my office, I think in the past, sometimes account administrator, administrative assistant, because they were in the same pay range, the titles were maybe used interchangeably, but if you look at the staffing ordinance, the list of, you know, the number of employee, it's full-time employees, and then the pay grades have different titles than what's in that. So there's, there's some issues there. And so anyway, she's not being given years of service for being, you know, she's still doing the administrative assistant position, but because they changed it, even though she's still doing all those duties and more, she's, they, you know, reduced her years of service. And I understand the years of service in a position, but I think it should possibly be expanded to a department. You know, if you come from recreation to court, those are pretty different positions that you would have, but taking on extra duties in the auditor's office shouldn't cost her years of service.
Well, can you document when her duties changed?
Yeah.
So...
Four point one years ago. I mean, it's in there. Oh, yeah. And, you know, at the time, I was working with...
So you're saying that she should get credit for that time?
For her full-time in the office, yeah, which is nine years.
Well, has she been doing the same duties, or these new duties, for nine years? Or is she doing...
No, no.
Four years.
Just four years?
Four years, yeah.
Okay. So are we paying the person for longevity strictly, or are we paying the position?
Well, you know, that's the question. That's the question. And you can justify it, you know, and say that she...
I don't have an answer.
She took on these new duties, but, you know, is that fair for somebody who started about the same time she did, about a month earlier, to get nine years of, years of service credit?
I see your point.
Who has not really changed her duties. And here, she's taken on many more extra duties. We reduced our staff, and yet she doesn't get credit. So maybe I'm just asking for an exception for that person in my office. However, as Laura said, we've looked at some of these other positions and kind of wonder why, you know, if you're being given a new title, which is what happened to Laura or Leanna, then why do you get years of service? But she didn't, doing the same things, but just changed her title. So that's just why we brought it up. So I have issues with that, but that's our office. But like I said, I see, we see that in a few other places in the city. Okay, so, yeah, so as I said, I'd like to see the manual before we do that. As I said, if you decide to go with 25% on every position, I think it's ripe for abuse, but that's not, to me, as far as the other departments, but that's, that's a big increase in the cost to the city. And right now, I'll tell you that in the general fund, the, you know, the best implementation plan, and I'm not saying you shouldn't put caps on it or anything, that's something you'll have to think long and hard about, but it'll cost $125,000 just in the general fund to do this.
To do what?
To implement this. The total is $258,000 for the city, so about $125,000 just for the general fund. So just, you know, we have those breakdowns. We went in and did that, just so you know. And I talked about the new money. Some of the other, yeah, I guess, I have issues with the rehire thing. This issue actually was, I was criticized last year for bringing Ray back at the rate he left at. He came back temporarily, as you know, for about six months or so, and I didn't give him a raise, but I brought him back at the radius and for the experience. And this kind of goes back to the rehire thing and why we would punish people because they retired. It feels like we're only punishing people who retire from the city. I understand the double-dipping thing. I do not agree with it. I feel that someone who has earned the right to retire, and if they're a good enough employee and we want to bring them back, then we should be able to. I mean, when I think of the training, Ray was only going to be there for about six months. I couldn't have trained somebody in that. You know, a training period in the finance world is 18 months to go through every process that you do, you know, year-end, new budgets, all that kind of stuff. And it would hardly have been worth it for me to bring somebody in and try to train them for that six-month period. And then I brought Laura back, the same thing at the rate she left at. I didn't hire her at 25% above, and in this plan, she stands to get an increase because she isn't getting paid probably what she should. But, and part of the reason a lot of this came about is, we don't have a good, a good process in place to reward people who've been here two and three years. Brian mentioned that at the meeting we had in groups. And the, Chris, you were in there, and said, you know, the issue comes with the pay raises is, you know, you give them a bump at six months, but you really don't know how good an employee they're going to be. And after a year, two, three years, do you remember that? Yeah. That's when, you know, you should be able to go in and give them an additional bump, and we have no process in place for that. And so anyway, yeah, I guess I just, the rehires thing, why would they come back if you're going to start them at the minimum with all their training? You know, I guess if, if nothing else, could we give them the 25% over, that we would offer a brand-new person that doesn't know anything about the city processes? I mean, that's the thing. I can bring a CPA into my office, and they still have to have a lot of training for what our processes are. It'd be the same in other departments, you know? You can, you can have the credentials, but, you know, the actual on-the-job experience make a difference. So anyway, I don't know. Does anybody have any other questions for me?
No, that's a pretty good list.
Yeah, I know. Well, like I said, I would just...
No, that's good to know.
You know, I just hope council will take their time and look at some more of this stuff. I don't know what all you've been given, and to think about the financial impact, and as I said, some of these other things, like the 25% on every new hire is an additional financial impact that needs to be considered.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, I just want to clarify. It's not 25% on top of what the minimum rate is. It's 25% through the pay grade. So...
Explain that.
Three, three percent, more than 25. 25% of the way through. So it's, it's an effect of like, what we were trying to do with the administration manual was give the appointing authority some sort of flexibility to hire above the minimum rate of pay. Because my understanding was they had to take everything to you, right? Anything above the minimum rate of pay?
Certain pay grades...
Pay grades six and up?
A lot of them.
Okay. So it was a way to provide flexibility for the appointing authority, but it's 25% through the pay grade. So if the pay grade is 40% wide, it's 25% of the, 10% of the way.
Easy example would be if you had a minimum of $20 and a maximum of 30 in a pay grade, 25% of the way through the pay grade is $22.50. It's not a 25% raise on top of $20, which would be a greater...
Well, 25% of 20 is five, right?
It would be 25, you'd be halfway through the pay grade.
Right.
So...
The other thing, the auditor brought up the rehire stuff. That's a policy decision for city council. I've seen it done different ways, at different employers. You got school boards who give full credit for administration people who come back and are rehired, yet they may only allow teachers to come back up to five years. It just depends. I have clients whose philosophy is they should be treated as a new hire. In our administration manual, we do have up to 25% past the minimum right now, but that's up for debate. That's, that's up for debate. And the last thing I did want to stress was, the auditor talked about possibly going to department-wide credit. If we're concerned about pay or cost, that's going to increase the cost as well, because you're going to be adding more time to people, which, that's also a policy decision. There's really no right or wrong answer to a lot of these things. It's how the city of Athens wants to pay their individual. Our job is to facilitate that process and kind of give you guys what the trends are and make it as smooth as possible. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council, administration? I don't have any more. I'd just like to see the...
Manual.
The manual, the final, everything, and hear about the administration, what's, how they want to proceed at this point. What's your plan?
I think council needs to read through everything that you're going to, you know, through the manual and understand...
Okay, so we, we read it all, and we sit down, and then what?
Then we bring something forward. We'll come forward with one of these three scenarios, and I'll tell you, it won't be the first one.
Right.
Again, I've already expressed my interest in the third option on there. So that's where I'm at. But again, I want council to thoroughly absorb the information in the manual.
I think, I would echo what the mayor's saying. I think kind of council members have the responsibility to look through all of that, to look at what the best practices are with what the financial picture for Athens about putting it in jeopardy. And we, I think it's real important for us to take the time to look through. We've hired the experts to come in and help us, and I do want to thank you, because I know you've done a thorough process in a fairly short period of time. And we thank our HR director and the auditor's office for looking through these, raising issues that we have to make decisions about. So we appreciate that.
Would it help if we PDF'd everything in one document?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Does the administration have a timeframe they want to move through this, within the next month, three months, by the end of the year?
My understanding was you were looking to implement it July 1st. Maybe I pulled that out of the year or somewhere, when we started this process, since we couldn't leave January 1. I think what we'd like to do is to provide the scenario that the mayor selected in the 2C to the auditor, to run numbers, and know what's going to come from what fund, and that's the information that their office needed to do there. But we feel we're coming to the end of Clemence and Nelson. I mean, they've been engaged and been here multiple times, and engaged with the department heads and everyone else, and just are, they're ready to produce whatever our final request is.
Sounds good to me.
We'd just like to thank the city, too, and administration, and the auditor's office for everything.
Well, thank you. Okay, if nothing else, we'll move on to our next item. I understand, the mayor, oh, the mayor?
I would like to reciprocate. Thank you. I know, I know the work that has gone into this. I know that this is normally a process that, you know, takes 10 to 12 months to go through, but instead, it's gone through, I'm not going to say this is expedited, but this was crunch. This was digesting a lot of information in a rather short, atypical amount of time to get to this point. So again, I thank you, Brian James, and everyone else, for that matter, for going through this process. It's not been an easy one. It's not been an easy process for anyone. But again, for council to get the documents and start reading through them and digesting it yourselves, you know, at the end of the day, you hold the purse strings with what goes forward. But again, I'm looking at things from the most prudent level, and again, I think 2C, look at 2B as well, but anyway.
Councilmember Butler?
Thank you. I was just going to acknowledge, too, I appreciate the auditor's office offering insight, too. And I likely will be knocking on their door for a little help and assistance since I'm being appointed to the Finance and Personnel Committee again, so...
I forgot to congratulate you on that, your appointment.
Thank you, yeah.
Congratulations.
I thank the auditor as well, and their office.
Here, here. Okay, recycling bins appropriations. I see a beautiful little slide up there.
Yes.
Ninety-six, sixty-four, and forty-eight.
Yes.
Height, okay. Let's see, there's our resident expert upon recycling bins. I believe that's Councilmember Butler.
I can offer a little bit and acknowledge that, I'll offer a second or two for people to exit the room, since this may not be quite as exciting.
I'm excited.
I disagree.
We've talked about these for 10 years.
Yeah. Well, there's a little history, and I know that the images that we're able to access here in this room will find their way to the TV monitor as well, so that people at home hopefully will be able to see these images. But we have a couple of slides that are blue recycling bins, and ninety-six, I believe, a sixty-four, and then a smaller container as well.
Less than gallons, correct?
Correct. And these have a lid on them attached, and a, God bless you, and a pool bar.
How many cubic meters are they?
I'm not positive. I don't have that app. I don't have that app on my phone.
Quit feeling so good.
Yeah, his medicine's kicking in.
Yeah, drugs are good.
But, you know, for a little history here, as a community, recycling has been, been relevant for a long time. We, I believe, Councilmember Bain was significant, introducing curbside recycling around 30 or so years ago. And it was, I believe, if I understand correctly...
Eighty-four?
We were the first in the state to do so. It's a big deal. At the time, we sorted our curbside recycling, and recently, as the community knows, we've moved, we've moved to single stream. And the point of single-stream recycling is that you get more volume. Again, with the requirements from the EPA, recent Google search on, an article that was in the Athens News, and County Commissioner Schmule was quoted acknowledging this, this requirement for the EPA, I believe it was a 2013 article, wanting us to, you know, to be more mindful expectations with waste reduction standards. So the benefit of moving towards this direction with these bigger containers is that you get more volume. So there's, there's a push, a quest from the mayor's office. The deputy, Ron Lucas, our deputy service safety director, started this process and working with a grant request. In 2015, the city of Athens applied for a grant that would have funded up to $120,000 worth of uniform recycling carts for our city residents. We were denied at the time, but they then recontacted us recently to see if we could partner again, offering up to $80,000 to help us purchase recycling carts for our city residents. And these, again, these would be the 64-gallon carts. Rolling carts, as you can, you may not be able to tell from the photo, that there are wheels on the back, and they're large, sturdy. There you go. You can see the wheel in the bottom-left corner there. And again, as I mentioned, the lids are attached. The request from the administration is for us to spend up to $250,000 to issue an RFP for recycling carts, which would then help pay for delivery, education, and marketing of this program. So we do have some money that would help pay for it in the grant process. And again, I think, as we know, education is key in our community with the amount of turnover we have of our residents in some parts of our neighborhoods. The mayor's office may also have more info or expand on this, too, and council members may have questions. Thank you. Councilmember Paul.
I have to say that the smallest is super big for people who are in a smaller family. Like, the forty-eight, it would take, my family, probably two months or something to even approach filling it up, because I think more and more people are going towards reducing. That's really what we want. You reduce and then you recycle. So I would encourage either, because you look at the red boxes now that we have. How big are those? And is this the only thing that people are going to be able to use, is the smallest one? My concern is that if it's so big that people aren't putting it out because it's not full, then you're going to have problems with it being, you know, sitting there for quite a while. And also, just people who have smaller yards, like in town, that's also an issue, because you also will have a garbage can. So...
And I think Councilmember Paul brings up good points. I forgot to acknowledge this. I'm sorry, mayor. I was just going to say, I forgot to acknowledge that in the request, the city administration... I was just gonna say, I forgot to acknowledge that in the request, the city administration was looking at a delivery of, I believe, 3,500 carts. And then would like to also order backups for replacing. And perhaps potentially, this may be something for them to look at as well as maybe smaller sizes.
It was something, it was certainly discussed to go with the forty-eight gallon versus the sixty-four. I would contend, currently, just so everyone knows, the red bins that we currently use, those are 10 gallon. But 10 gallon open top, you know, as opposed to something like this, to where you can get significantly more with it being open shoved in there. So, it's really beyond 10 gallons, if you think about it, with the containers themselves.
Would this, would these be required for, for people to have to use? Like, you couldn't use the red ones anymore, or?
There's like an opt-out position, you know, that sounds like aggregation. But we did discuss about having carts available for those single-person, individual households that would be smaller and that they would be able to use. And also accommodating elderly handicapped disabilities
Right.
We do now.
I just think that a lot of people, I know in my area, most of the single, the family houses have really reduced the amount of stuff that's going out. And
Our, our vision was, you know, your forty-eight recycling and your smaller trash.
Yeah. That would be great. But I think forty-eight is still, when you consider that the 10 is now, and for a lot of people, the 10 seems to work.
Well, I want to say in my neighborhood, I think the sixty-four would be ideal. Since we went to the single stream, unsorted, the amount of recycled material in the neighborhoods up on Carroll, Old Coach, and so on has dramatically increased. And I see that especially when we have a good windstorm because it all blows my way and I'm busy picking it up. And whereas people used to have like one bin, they now have three. And they have garbage, or trash cans full of plastic bottles and aluminum cans and paper and so on. So, it's really, literally exploded. We are recycling more. Because what's happening in the old system was, a lot of stuff that's now being recycled was just simply going into the trash.
Right.
You know, it was getting plastic bagged, tied up, forgotten about. And a lot of stuff went that way. And now people are saying, no, I'm not gonna do that since I can, I don't have to sort it. So
I think Councilmember Pappy also had a quick comment too. Thank you, mayor.
So, I would just add that there are several people here on council who have been on many committees for many years, myself included, member Nicely included, who have talked about these issues. And I really think that folks need to have options. You need to have options for storage. Not everybody has a large two-car garage to put their, you know, their bins or their cans or whatever. And, and I really do think households should have options. Obviously, we know of, you know, multiple rental units. Obviously, they could probably use a big bin as well. I also know that in many communities, recycling only comes once every two weeks. I think in my parents' community, recycling comes, and they have a large, one of these very large ones, so that it only comes every two weeks. So, I also think in our contract, we need to know, are we talking about weekly service? Because if we're talking about weekly service, we may be able to get by with smaller bins. It just depends, but I do believe that households should have options, that we shouldn't buy, one, I know that I would not fill the forty-eight and we recycle everything.
Well, we, and maybe the condition of the grant. What I read from the grant on long was that the minimum of sixty gallon for our week, for our service. So, I guess we'd like to step back and look and ask at
I think that would be a great question to ask because that's not really fair.
It may be a loss of, you know, this eighty thousand dollars to apply towards it. And we know that we want to get to that, you know, in our future, so
But we can certainly ask. We can, we can find that out. You know, possibly, as Member Butler was saying, possibly the remaining thousand, because, you know, upfront, it's gonna be thirty-five hundred of these containers. Maybe the other thousand can be, can be the forty-eight. I am in agreement significantly with what Member Reisner was saying. You know, I see more and more people using multiple red bins and filling these things up. But the philosophy is, the more you can get people to put anything into single stream, which is what we have right now, you know, they will. They'll put all kinds of things in, with the way it's non-sort. And you'll need a sixty-four gallon. The flip side is, is that you'll need probably less than a 30 gallon wet trash container, you know, trying to drive that down. So, we're putting less in the landfill and more being sent out to the MRF for recycling. But we can certainly look to see if we can, through the recycling partnership, to see if we can do a thousand or something where it's forty-eight gallon containers. Member Paul, I agree with you. I, I know some families, and I like that, are trying to be, you know, prudent with the packaging alone with what they're buying and
Well, my, I guess one of my questions was, are these gonna be required?
Right.
Are there options? If they're required and the smallest one is forty-eight, that's still, there are, there are households in the city that are single, older, or a couple. And so, we need to, to make sure, I mean, it's such a jump from going to the red ones to a forty-eight. I mean, that's huge.
Well, in volume it is, but in footprint, I'm looking at the footprint, I think, as it sits on the floor of my garage, is no bigger than the 10 gallon footprint.
And I think there's
I mean, it's taller, but it's
Yeah, but, yes.
So, if you're talking about where can I put it in the garage?
Thank you.
Well, take the red one away and put the blue one there.
So, so my question is, is the city buying every person's recycling? Or are we looking at having, you know, what, what is the situation there? Are we looking at people having an option?
Well, this grant would, would buy everyone
Everyone in the city.
A recycling container, much like we do with the red ones now.
So, you trade in the old and you get a blue? Okay.
There is, there's also an option in here. There's an exceptions clause within this grant too. All programs have the option for disability services for these locations. Smaller containers are acceptable, coupled with a clear, clear direction for those who are eligible. So, there is a clause in there.
Is it only disabled?
I wonder if we can explore that.
Okay.
We can certainly explore to
Smaller households?
It doesn't hurt to ask
Right.
And see what can be done. But this, to, to leave, you know, eighty thousand dollars on the table, because this isn't, this isn't the first time this has been attempted. You know, there's letters of
Right.
Support that went forward when former mayor Paul Wile was, you know, exploring this option. And they didn't get this grant. Now they've come back with a different mechanism and asking, literally asking the city, would you like to engage in this option instead? And along with that is about $138,000 of add-ons for this particular value added with campaign materials, dedicated support for the partnership, which is $30,000, dedicated support for, you know, champion building, tech support or technical assistance. I don't know if that's technical assistance and here's how you roll it out to your curb or not, but Are these block-toed? Anyway.
I think
So, that's a hundred and thirty, $139,000 above and beyond the $80,000. So, but then on the city side, it's a hundred and, or, well, it's, first of all, this is a reimbursable grant. So
And so, the other technical piece to this is that it's a, the truck lifts it in because it has the bar on it? Or are the, because, you know, a human probably, the largest one would be very difficult for anybody. And even the sixty-four would probably be difficult, full of glass or
Sure.
Whatever. So, is that?
That's a good question.
Because I don't think our trucks
That's an Athens Hawking recycling question in terms of their truck. Does their truck already, they have new, some new trucks? And are those trucks equipped with the lift bar, the hook on the front that'll sit there? And not only empty one, it'll empty multiple. I believe they can empty three at a time, depending on the setup that you've got, which cuts down on time.
Right.
But, you're right.
Madam President, you have a question?
I have a question and a, and a comment. The first one, the question with what agency is the grant? I'm sorry, I didn't, I hope it wasn't.
Recycling Partnership.
Yeah.
That's their name.
That's their name. Okay, state agency, nonprofit, private nonprofit, or?
They're out of Falls Church, Virginia.
Okay.
So
And the second one is just a comment. It may not be possible with this as one of the add-ons, but a challenge, as I've noticed, I've been really impressed by the small grant that Ohio University received this week, 5,000 from Keep America Beautiful. And they're converting their trash cans, many of them to recycling. So, you'll see a lot of them on campus. And I'd like to see us, at the same time that we're implementing this in the residential level, to look at our downtown. We've talked about this for many years, if there isn't a possibility of moving forward with the downtown area, same time we're educating everybody. It's like educate our visitors or, you know, I walk up and down the street every week. And if I had a co-location, as the university's doing, of recycling can with trash can, I think that would be great.
Okay. I'm glad you brought that up. I have asked Deputy Service Safety Director Ron Lucas to look into new trash cans in the uptown area for pedestrian trash that gets dropped in, as opposed to our large, round, open, topless trash cans that wind comes by and blows all kinds of stuff all over. Anyway, they're looking at, he is looking at one company, want to explore others likely, but exploring a company called Big Belly. Big Belly has these solar-operated trash compactors which are dual. One size for wet trash. And then it has a soft compression on the recycling side because there's gonna be glass balls and whatnot and it won't crush stuff. It just packs it down. We also asked the question, I asked the question of the reps about this particular type of trash can on that soft compaction recycle side, whether they work with MRFs and are they getting a cube of recyclable materials that can't be pulled apart? And they said, they work with lots of MRFs and this is all, you know, sortable that comes out of these, which is a good thing. A lot of cities use these, so we're exploring that. I'm glad you brought that up. Certain, certainly something that's, I'm very keen on is getting pedestrian recycling containers up on Court Street and all our laterals going out. So, we're exploring it. As soon as I have more on that, this is something that will likely become before council because it's maybe something that we have to put out to bid.
Council?
Thank you. This is a question for administration. So, these are called recycle bins, but would they fall under the same classification as a trash can? Would they have to follow the same rules as being hidden on people's property?
Yes.
For the, for these blue recycle bins you're talking about?
Yes, yes. Or are they not as offensive as a trash can? I mean, is this, I mean, is this something where you're gonna have a citizen that has, you know, had to go to some, some extreme to, you know, put their, put their can behind something? Now are they gonna have to put two of them?
I appreciate the question. I think that that's a council decision
Yes.
Because the ordinance was written and approved by council to have the out-of-sight trash cans. And so, I think that's something, it can certainly be explored on the administration side. To sit there and go, these are all uniform, they look the same, they, they're nice and pretty blue. You know, short of painting the side of your house blue to make it blend in or something, you know, I think that we could certainly have that conversation.
Okay.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, I'm having a metal blade.
I'm a D.
Sorry.
This was just a question for the mayor too. I understand that there would be an eighty thousand grant and the supporting service, but is the city matching this with any money? I didn't, I didn't understand as part of the partnership, is it an equal match?
Good question.
The city would be matching. The city's, city's match would be $155,000 coming from the garbage fund.
Okay.
Which is a healthy fund. The money is there
Right.
To do something like this. Because the, the overall total for the 5,000 bins and all the accessories that go along with it, i.e. all their add-ons, added value added, you know, well, minus the value added, we're looking at $135,000 total. I'm sorry, 200. Thank you, thank you. $235,000.
And am I seeing correctly in the unappropriated balance that we've got 1.2 million in unappropriated in the garbage fund right now?
We do.
Help me?
Help me.
And I believe Ron was building in, you know, if you give us the additional 15,000 in case these bids come in, it will be higher. So, that's, I think that's why the request is at 250, the 80 to be reimbursed in the future.
Any other questions? Recycling bins. Mr. Mayor?
Not a question, a comment. One of the interesting things of these bins, and again, a lot would depend on what the, what kinds of technologies are on the new Athens Hawking recycling trucks. But these bins have these radio frequency identification tags on them. A lot of cities have essentially a kind of a barcode reader that's reading that trash can, knows whose house it is, knows how much it weighed, how much they're taking out and removing from the landfill in terms of recycling. That's a question that we could certainly pose to the Athens Hawking Recycling Center to see what technologies they have on their new trucks, if they have something like that this, you know, because it'd certainly be informative.
I do recall a meeting with the, the Senator Roger Bale, I believe, came down and gave a, a talk. He had some bins with him and he talked about all the technologies that were embedded and, and that, whether or not we'd ever actually take advantage of it.
Right.
You know, it's up to us, obviously, but it's certainly a way to go. It's, I mean, the option's there, we can take advantage of it or not. Right. Any others? Well, I'll move on to miscellaneous. The only miscellaneous I have was a question sent to me by my distinguished colleague, Councilwoman Pappy, concerning the RFQ document. Would you like to explain your question to the
So, my question was, the RFQ went out for the pool options and we're moving forward with that. The city has asked for qualified bidders. And they're, I don't know if it's my confusion or other people, I don't know, but I have a, I just had a concern. I know that we said 7.3 million in the RFQ. And so, my first question was, does that include the interest on whatever loan that we get? And if not, what does that mean in terms of a qualifying bidder, in terms of what their expectation is, in terms of knowing what the pool, what, how much money they have to work with? I think it's a reasonable question. And I haven't been clear in all our discussion over the last 18 months whether that was a part of the 7.3 or the loan was, the loan amount would be an additional, the interest would be an additional amount. And obviously, we don't know how much, what a bid would be and how much the pool would be, but it's all kind of confusing to the public, I think. I think I'm not the only one. And then we did later in the day, I think every council person has something that the Chair of Arts, Parks, and Rec, ex-mayor Abel, had put together. So, we're looking at that in terms of the amount and then the loan payment and the interest and the total remaining. All of that is on a spreadsheet here. So, that was my question.
Yeah. Under the RFQ, I mean, it was 7.3 million. That's what they would have to work with. You don't count the debt service in that. I mean, if, if you include the debt service, because they don't have the debt service to work with, their debt service is what we're paying, you know, in terms of interest back on that bond. Former mayor Rick Abel did send something out where he's re-projected things as, you know, with this year's 2016 growth in looking at it. And if, for those of you who have this document, and I think council, all of you do, or I hope that all of you do, over the 20 years, so through 2036, it's projected at 18,211,642. But with the debt service included in the 4.2 But with the debt service included in the $4.3 million loan, over 20 years at 4.25, we're looking at $9,186,960 total. That's including the debt service on that. So in terms of working capital for the pool itself, it's 7.3, so that hasn't changed.
You just mentioned another figure, 4 point what, million?
4.25%. No, I didn't say million.
Oh, okay. All right. I was like, oh.
No, I'm not throwing millions in.
All right, 4.2, okay.
And that?
Madam President?
But I do have a question, too, because we've talked about revenue, perhaps the auditor can help us with the revenue projections, because at one point it was 14 million. And so this has been revised also, that our projections are looking healthy and it's now 18 million projected revenue from the levy, is what Mayor Abel has said. And I know our, some of our, you know, our revenues were up.
Where's he getting that from? So my additional question to that was, where's he getting 18 million from? I mean, I don't.
It's, well, the original projections for the income tax levy were 14 million, I believe, 13 to 14 million, but now it's 18.
Well, this is Rick's estimate, estimation, and he's probably pretty on track. As you know, we've got a nice little surplus on our community center bond tax that we put out there 20 years ago. I would be a little more conservative, so somewhere in between there, but we're still going to have 16 million, 15 million, you know, we're not going to, if we, you know, estimate it a little bit less, we're still going to have well over the amount needed for the pool projections. He's included operating and other things in here, maintenance.
So operating and maintenance are included?
He has a column there that adds that on. Staff maintenance, operating expense, and accessibility projects, which were other items listed in the ballot language.
So that, okay, wait a minute. Okay, I'm confused. Now we're not talking about pool, now we're talking about something else?
Well, the total amount collected, because you're looking at this total amount collected, he's also budgeted for these other.
Items.
Projects, yes, that, that council asked for. I guess, the thing is, if you look at it as a straight 20-year, you're going to come up with this like 16, 17 million. But the thing about tax money is, well into the next year, we'll still be collecting, right? People who file their taxes in April will be paying this levy from the year before. People who get extensions won't be paying it until April. So that's where it bumps it up a little bit there, is because a year after the levy ends, we'll still be collecting money.
I'm glad you mentioned that, Audra Heck, because what I failed to mention was, 2035 is the final year, as Audra Heck just mentioned a minute ago. And again, at this 1.02% growth over this 20-years' time, the, at the end of the final year, it's 17,939,000 and change moving forward. So I'm, I'm in full agreement with you to where, you know, I tend to think more conservatively, too, to where if it's 16, 16.5 moving forward. The other thing, too, just to share with everyone, you know, in the actual levy language, but this was, this was looking at, oh, this is for, does the actual ordinance write 02-16, where it says 7.3 million budget, but in parentheses, 58% of the estimated levy value, revenue. Whereas in former Mayor Rick Abel's last, or this most recent projection, that percentage of revenue coming in to go towards a pool, if you think about it, if he's projecting that it's actually going to be even higher, that percent towards the pool, you know, goes down. He's got 50.45% towards the pool. But, but again, that's just purely, you know, his calculation on growth, you know.
So things also happened, a simple projection was taking, say, our annual tax revenue for a year at this 10th of a percent for what we have now. But I think, I, in fact, I know I've talked to him about this, Rick also put in a 1.5% increase, which we have had since about 2004, when I first became auditor. We've had a steady increase in our tax revenue. It's probably more than 1.5%, but that is a pretty safe estimate of, so you add that in each year for your increased taxes being brought in. And then, so that bumps it up, and so.
So is the operating, where you have SMOPA, where he has all that in there, is that for not operating of a pool or any, you're talking about other operating expenses?
Yes. The pool already has a budget for all this stuff. We've had this budget, it's already been, been in the budget. Accessibility projects, that's not just the pool.
Right.
But, see, operating expense, that was put into the levy, ballot language, as I recall, so additional operating.
That's for other things, right? I'm just thinking, if we build a pool, well, I mean, when we build the pool, the pool, whatever ends up happening, is, the operating is already part of the current Arts, Parks, and Recreation budget?
Yes, yes.
I believe we're staying well within the intent of the ordinance that, you know, as the mayor pointed out, at that time, 7.3 million budget was estimated to be 58% even if we, somewhere between 50 to 58%, so that the other monies are available for those other improvements.
Yeah, the percentage is somewhat irrelevant. What, what is relevant is that what council approved was the 7.3 million dollars to go towards the construction of the pool.
If they have questions, they are directed, and there are a few to contact Rich Cantwell and tell you, they also love to contact.
When the Rec Advisory Board picked that number, they didn't pick the minimal pool, which would just be a replacement with nothing new amount, nor did they take the Cadillac pool. They felt that, and this is from a conversation, you know, with Rick Abel and whoever else was there in my office, but, you know, something in between. There are things that we don't have that people would like, and there are changes to the pool that people would like. And so they took, you know, a median amount to get a good pool that will be nicer than what we have, but, but not just spending everything we possibly can on it, because we do have these other projects and uses for the money. So that 7.3, and who knows what the bids will come in at? That will be up to administration and council, maybe their input for what they, they really want the pool to have or not have when all is said and done.
So all I'm, I'm referring back to is when you did the RFQ, when you wrote it, you put pool options in there, but really, we continue to hear one pool. I don't continue, I don't know what the RFQ is going to look like, I don't know what a qualified pool person will put forward with this amount of money, but I continue to hear, that's what I hear in the conversation, whether it be from the auditor, from Rec Advisory, or for whatever.
Well.
Very clearly using the exact language that's been passed by this committee, and a lot of it are vetted, and they, they'll be able to read through that, there's a link to the previous report, they can read out everything else that's, was involved in that.
I don't know what's in the RQ.
This is what we're attempting to do.
Right. Well, we'll just have to see what comes forward.
Well, council approved the, the last iteration of the language, which was leaving it broad as pool. You know, the levy doesn't say plural, there is no plural at all in the levy as it was drafted and what the citizens voted on. So the RFQ is qualified pool builder.
I appreciate it, I have the numbers better understood at this point.
Well, that concludes my committee. Do you have anything qualified to say that hadn't already been said?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Counsel?
Three minutes, if it's new information.
Out of storage in Des Moines, Ohio. This is the first time that anybody has stated in public record that 7.3 million discounts debt, or interest debt. So now we're saying capital or principal, 7.3 million. That's what the vendor would bill the city of Athens. Operational losses, completely aside from 7.3 million. Interest debt, completely aside from 7.3 million. The vendor bills the city a max of 7.3 million. Is that, that's crystal clear what you're saying?
This cost also includes the design engineering, that's what we're attempting to get.
That's part of the 7.3 million?
That is part of the 7.3 million.
7.3 million, cut and dry, that's it. That's the final answer. Okay. It's, Ms. Heck? It's, do you have a general idea of what the interest rate will be on this? Just your educated best guess based upon the climate today or when this fund will be taken up?
That's a little bit hard for me.
Can you give me a estimate within one interest point? Or one point of interest?
Mr. Speaker?
We're getting off.
Well, because this boils down to, this boils down to the other projects either being afforded or not afforded, because it starts to snowball beyond what council is willing to discount on the other accessibility projects. This, this is not a budget accepting bits and pieces coming from 10 different directions. It, if you've got 7.3 million, and let's say you pay 4% interest, let's just say 4%. That's $10,000, or $10,617,000. We're now upping the incomes from 16, projected 18. It, you still only have approximately $8 million for what has been projected to be $9 million of other costs for other projects. You're already over the budget even with the 7.3 million in principal. But this is still not making sense. Everybody is getting little factoids but not putting the whole picture together in one financial prospectus, is what I'm saying. And everybody's going to walk out of this room thinking they got an answer, but they don't have the complete answer. It, you can't, 7.3 million is going to be an $11 million pool total cost, unless and including the projected $3 million operational losses over 20 years, as Brandon Staring Carroll says. So you're talking $14 million out of $18 million receipts, that leaves $4 million for accessibility and armory upgrades and everything else. The money just isn't there, even though everybody's saying it is. These numbers have to put on a piece of paper, sort of place up in the exact same spreadsheet, you're not getting little tidbits of distractions and going into all this other stuff. What matters is, the primary reason for this levy was, by and large, the primary product or purpose was the pool. But the vendors have asked, I've talked to a couple vendors, prospective builders, they want to know what 7.3 million means. It, can they put 7.3 million with materials, services, labor, everything in there and build a city for that? Or no?
Thank you for the comments. We appreciate that.
It's not, this needs to be put down on paper. The comments aren't even close to touching this.
Thank you.
Okay. Transportation?
Are we finished with the?
Yes, we're done.
Your committee, okay. Transportation Committee, Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is Brew Week. Do we have someone here to speak about Brew Week? Come on up. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Brandon Thompson. Thanks for hearing me out tonight. I'm the new executive director of Brew Week. This is my first year. I'm not sure, do you guys have any information in front of you? I know Ron Lucas was doing some, somebody have anything in front? Okay, we'll be super easy. This year, Ohio Brew Week is going to run from Friday, July 15th through Saturday, July 23rd. We are in our 11th year of Ohio Brew Week. Last year's our 10th, 10th anniversary, and it was awesome. We're looking around 4,000 to 5,000 people coming into town for the love of craft beer in Athens. We feel this is a great event for bringing more tourism to the area in the summer. Craft brew has been exploding all over Ohio. As you probably know, we have three local breweries in town, Little Fish, Devil's Kettle and Jack Yo's, while we feature during our Brew Week. So I'm not sure what the number of breweries since last year's increased, but just having two from last year, it's going to be pretty big. So we're expecting hopefully more breweries to attend this year. This year, and this is just aside about Brew Week, we have a few more events going on, golf tournament, everything like that, but I'm here about street closure, so. Basically, everything's running like last year, so there's no new streets or anything like that. We're looking from 2:00 to 11:00 actual programming. So we're looking to request closure of Court Street from Washington to Carpenter, and the closure of State Street from Congress to Mill Street. We were hoping for 8:00 until midnight, I think that's what we did last year, I believe.
On exactly which date?
On the 23rd, sorry. July 23rd, our last call, our event. So we're doing the same thing with the culmination of Brew Week happening July 23rd. So basically, from 8:00 AM until 12:00 midnight on July 3rd, we're hoping to close the street. We need to suspend parking, the noise ordinance, and I don't know if it's changing the vending rule, but those three's what we're looking for that day. And then.
Let me ask you a question, Brandon. Okay, Carpenter to Washington Street?
Correct.
Okay. And is the, you have a stage in music?
Correct, yeah. So the stage would be in the same area, last year, we had it down by, it's a little above Cornwell's by Courtside Pizza. We did the same thing, over the side of the fire lane and everything like that.
Okay. All right. And what was the time again?
Programming is going to be from 2:11. We're going to close the streets at 8.
8:00 AM?
Until midnight.
So 1:00 AM for cleanup?
Well, yeah, good for taking, I mean, music will end at 11, so about 1:00 at 10:00.
Okay. Counsel, have any questions? No?
I haven't, I'll just, I just, thank you again, Mr. Thompson, for being here this evening and presenting. I haven't received any negative feedback or input regarding the stage or the placement. I know we were talking about other events as well with the placement of the stage.
Yeah, I haven't spoken with AAUB yet, but being my first year, is going to reach out to them and see just kind of the feedback. We are going to be changing the vending on the street, so as far as you guys are concerned, you know, a tent is a tent, but we've had some of the brewers all down at the end. I'm going to see what their, some of the businesses' feelings are higher up on Court Street, see if they want more, you know, brewers or food and stuff like that. So I just don't know what their opinion is yet, because I haven't reached out to them.
Although I will, I missed the full week and then, and then also remind you.
July 15th.
July 15th, okay, thank you.
Yeah, Friday, Saturday.
And then from which, from where on Court Street again? How much, how many blocks?
Basically, from Chase Bank down to Carpenter.
So Washington to Carpenter?
Correct. And then on, excuse me, we're going to close State Street, hopefully from Congress to Mill Street. So the same, same layout as last year.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's different than what previously had been, so, other mayor also.
So, no more on council? We can ask more if you have.
Sure.
Administration?
Just that, I mean, the times that Mr. Thompson's asking for in terms of street closures, the same as last year, which was what was approved, closing down at 8, this is a big event, and so there's a lot of moving pieces with the vending as well as beer and the stage. I'm assuming the stage is going to be, what you're referring to is near Fern.
Correct, yeah.
Near Fern Alley, but a little bit closer back, and it's projecting sound south away from North Hill, which is, was a strategy that Brew Week came up with two years ago when they first had the stage up there then. You know, just as a side note to the whole event in and of itself, it falls in the middle of July, the slowest month for a lot of our retail up on Court Street, and so, and it is a nine-day-long event, which gives a nice shot in the arm, not only to, you know, Court Street, restaurants, certainly the bars, but also hotels fill up during that period of time, and the events are all over the place, as a lot of you are familiar, from the O U N to Eclipse, it's all over the place. So it's kind of, it's serving broadly, not just one locale, but throughout the whole city. So it's a big shot that, I mean, if you speak to Paige Alas down at the Convention and Visitors Bureau, she would attest to the same thing, but, well, she's here tonight, she's here. This is a, this is a, this is a big deal.
I would really encourage you, Mr. Thompson, to reach out to AAUB.
Definitely, and I mean, I think, we've also had some other groups, I guess I want to preface this as well, it is craft brew, but we've had some groups reach out, some family events. One thing that just comes up on my head, the Central Venue wants to do a root beer event, so, so people who don't want to drink can still come to the event. I think it's an awesome idea, when they come up. And there's a few breweries, I think it was Devil's Kettle who does some ginger ale. And there's a few breweries, I think it was Devil's Kettle who does some ginger ale. So they're trying to get non-alcoholic drinks, so people can still come and come to the event. You know, because if you don't drink, Brew Week may not be your thing. But so this is, we're trying to expand and get more people involved. That's one thing that, you know, we're looking at.
That's a good thing. I like that idea, truly.
I agree.
Mayor?
Just a point of clarification for you and Brew Week. You know, in the past, the parking garage has been closed, and free parking, rather, I shouldn't say closed, free parking. But that won't be the case this year or moving forward. It'll be pay to park.
Okay. Do you have any other questions for us?
Not really. I mean, that was, street closure was the big thing. That's really it.
We're going to do the full three readings. I think we'll have our full 30 days if we start next, at our next regular session. But I would like to, maybe on the final reading night, which you can check back with the clerk when that would be, just kind of give us an update of where you.
Like a break day. Because we, right now, we have an idea of, you know, we have most of the bands set. But as far as, you have a meeting coming up next month of, you know, where everything will actually look like.
Okay. That, I think that'd be nice, right before everybody votes on it.
Yeah, like, six weeks or something like that?
Right.
Yeah. Well, and we'll have, I'll have all the events, too, because most of it are planning right now. But things outside of actually the street closures, so you guys understand, like, what we're doing this year.
Okay. I appreciate that. Any other questions, counsel? Are you ready?
Okay. Thank you.
And I think it's awesome that we're discussing recycling in such a broad way. Not if we're going to do it, but what size cans should we have? I think that's a little great.
Zero waste. Make it a zero-waste event. Now we have some, we have Boogie on the Bricks. And is there anybody here for Boogie on the Bricks? Because there was quite a bit of discussion when they came last time. And then I've also, a retailer on Court Street has reached out to me. And they're not, they think it should be a smaller closure of the street. So I don't have anybody else here to speak about it. But they were saying Washington to State and be done, one block.
The retailer what?
The retailer on Court, on Court Street, South Court. So Ms. Allos is here. I don't know if you'd like to come briefly. I don't, I don't feel comfortable going forward without a, because we were also talking about it being Saturday, the 16th. Isn't that correct? That was the big discussion. And Mr. Thompson, have you had any contact with them?
Yeah, so.
Let us have you come back up here. I don't know that we'd be ready to go.
I will be gone, there'll be half. But I was here two weeks ago just to see how this all went.
Right.
We hadn't talked yet, but I've spoken with Judy through text. And basically, indicated to me that they're going to do the last week, or one of the last weeks of June, that the boards decided. Now, whether or not that's come to you guys, I don't know.
Nope.
So that was indicated to me that they were doing that.
Okay.
Because we were scrambling as well, and they said, you know, they went to their committee. And so, but I don't know if that's official yet, so.
Ms. Allos, would you like to come up? And maybe you can help us out, Mayor? While she's walking.
I was just going to say, you know, for everyone else to speak for a.
Isn't right.
It isn't right. I think that we need, we've not heard from anybody from Boogie on the Bricks. Counsel clearly hasn't heard from anybody. We can speculate all day long, but until someone comes, and I'm hoping that will happen soon, because that event could potentially occur sooner than in July. So, you know, we haven't heard anything.
Ms. Allos, just share with us your feelings about.
The mayor said, we've not had any communication from Boogie on the Bricks on their data, other than what we read in the paper about their, their desire to move to the July 16th day, the first weekend of Brew Week. Which is very difficult from a marketing standpoint, when you have two separate events, particularly one that lasts 10 days, and that, and we really put as much effort into as we do Brew Week. We've always been an advocate for having those two events separate. It's also very difficult to block the streets from a retailer standpoint and a restaurant standpoint.
Absolutely.
Two weekends in a row.
Absolutely.
With that being said, whatever is decided, we'll give it 150% and market it in the best way that we can. But our preference is for those two events to remain separate and to not have two back-to-back weekends, to have to do a significant amount of marketing, not to mention the street closure.
Thank you very much, because that's helpful for us as well to know that. But two Saturday closures, back-to-back, is difficult, I think, from a retailer point of view.
We have a lot, we have an additional street closure for the summer with the King Midget. They have a car show, plus they'll have High Street Block one Saturday morning for their High Street climb as well. So we do have a fair number of street closures that do bring in visitors. And we will be working with the retailers, as AAUB does, to sort of help them kind of figure out how to attach themselves to those events that happen there, making it something that's really beneficial for them. We also are working to improve the way that we direct people to good places to park, like the parking garage. And I would certainly encourage the city to look at other ways, particularly with signage. I wish they could better direct people to the parking garage. From all of those points of entry into the Uptown area, we get, literally, people will call us on their cell phones and ask us how to get into the parking garage. So just a, just good reminder as we move into the summer and as we attempt to pay for the repairs to the parking garage.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay. Any miscellaneous from administration? Yes? No?
There's a miscellaneous, I'm sorry. Well, street closure, I don't know if it's just worth mentioning from Mayor's office, but Cable Lane.
Oh, I do have a whole series of closures.
Yeah, thank you.
South Schaefer, we close between West, or, I'm sorry, close between Union and Baird Street Wednesday, March 30th, at 8:00 AM until water, water main repair is taking place. Also, a closing at the intersection of Smith Street and Baird, Baird, thank you, on Tuesday, March 29th, beginning at 8:00 AM. And again, until the, that's for a sewer main repair. That'll be closed until the repair is done. And then a portion of Cable Lane at Number 8. That's Tuesday, March 29th, so tomorrow. That's for water main repair. So, yes, Member Allos?
Well, I just have another question. It has to do with the Go Bus accident in Akron. I understand we had a couple people was injured with that. And I saw the picture of the bus over on its side. And I'm still trying to wrap my head around how in the world a bus can tip over like that.
I reached out to Karen.
If anybody has the information, I'd like to know, because there's absolutely nothing in the media about it.
I reached out to Karen Hongley, and maybe you've heard something, but I have heard nothing.
We've had several communications. And there is a, an immediate release, press release out there on that in particular. I mean, if you want me to get into some of the specifics, I certainly can. There were seven passengers, eight being the driver on the bus. As we understand, the bus was also going at a very low rate of speed when the accident occurred. Two passengers were transported to the hospital for minor injuries and have since been released. And the other thing, too, that's pertinent to Athens and Ohio University is that there were no Ohio University students onboard on this particular bus. Go Bus is thankful to Akron Fire Department and the Akron Police Department for the response on the scene. And with the Go Bus, safety of the passengers is number-one priority for the Go Bus. The cause of the accident remains under investigation. So that's what we have. Now that's what you have.
Is the city liable on any of this?
They require the total insurance.
So there is liability?
They carry the insurance.
Yes.
Contact with Pat Capri, and subsequently contacts.
Right.
With Lickfront and Baird's.
Baird's.
Yeah.
So is the bus completely out of commission now?
We don't know anything about the bus. I'm sure the bus will be part of the investigation process to look to see.
It wasn't our new bus, was it?
To look into what happened.
Was it one of the super-new ones?
It was naked.
Yeah, it was.
It was, yeah, it's one of the.
Ouch.
Don't know how, don't know any of those details. So we don't know which, how many miles were on this bus or something like that. More to unfold.
I'm sure they'll get back to us.
Who's investigating?
We have a full report.
National Transportation Board or the State of Ohio or?
You know, Member Allos, I don't know. Certainly find out.
I mean, usually with public transportation, if a train falls off the tracks, it's the National Transportation Board.